Very good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, June 8th, 2015. It's my honor to call the regular meeting of the City of Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Welcome, Commissioners, staff.
Thank you.
To our listening and viewing audience, welcome. Glad you're with us. Today's meeting has six items on the agenda, and they are as follows. Item one, adoption of the agenda. Item two, approval of minutes of the last regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Item three, public hearing application from Henry Schaefer for a waiver of subdivision to combine two lots into one, and a conditional use permit for a 100-foot cellular tower to be located at 3550 Highway 13 West. Item four, another public hearing, application from MM Burnsville Associates LP for a planned unit development amendment for a new restaurant within the existing Carpet King Building located at 1230 County Road 42 West. Item five, another public hearing, application from School District 191 for rezoning from R1, which is single-family residential, and I1 Industrial Park to R1 PUD single-family residential planned unit development. Comprehensive plan amendment from industrial office to low-density residential, as well as concept development and stage approval for a planned unit development for building additions and alterations to the Burnsville High School located at 600 Highway 13 East. Amountful. Item six, another public hearing, application from CenterPoint Energy for a conditional use permit amendment, preliminary and final plat of a one-lot commercial subdivision to be known as Burnsville Regulator Station on Nicolet Avenue, and a setback variance to construct a new regulator station and install a natural gas pipeline located south of 12908 Nicolet Avenue and north of 12932 Nicolet Avenue. Item seven will be updates, then adjournment. First item on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda, Commissioners? Staff? Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Move by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass on a 3-0 vote. Item two, approval of minutes from the May 26, 2015 meeting. Any corrections?
None for me.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Bradrick. Second, Commissioner Benke.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass on a 3-0 vote. Item three is a public hearing, application from Henry Schaefer for a waiver of subdivision to combine two lots into one, and a conditional use permit for a 100-foot cellular tower to be located at 3550 Highway 13. Ms. Garrus, welcome.
The application is a conditional use permit amendment. The subject site is located on Highway 13. It's in the city's Gateway Industrial Heavy zoning district, and there is an existing building in use that's been there for a number of years, which is Burnsville Trailer Hitch. They are working with Verizon Wireless. Verizon would like to construct a 100-foot cellular tower and lease land from Burnsville Trailer Hitch in order to have their facility located just north of the existing building. The subject site does contain two lots. It's two actual separate lots. There was a drainage and utility easement that was platted. Oops. Go through here. You can kind of see it on the site survey. The old drainage and utility easement ran along the common lot lines in this area. That was vacated back, I believe, in the 1990s. So what we have is a situation where you've got an existing building and parking lot over combined property. So we've requested the applicant to submit a waiver of subdivision application to actually combine those properties legally into one parcel for building purposes. The current building code does not allow you to place buildings, et cetera, over common lot lines that way. So that will address that particular situation. The site has received a number of conditional use permits over the years, primarily for allowing display of various things, motor vehicles, campers, trailers, et cetera, for sale on a periodic basis. The application before you is for a cell tower. This is very similar to other applications that we have seen. The applicant is looking at the northern part of the site, just north of the existing driveway. This would be the new lease area for Verizon Wireless. They're proposing the cell tower in this location, on the west part of the pad, and then a new building to house the equipment on the easterly part of the pad. The access will be provided over the existing parking lot in this location, and there are access easements and then also utility easements that are shown on the site survey. Currently, utilities come in both from Beard Avenue, and then also we've got power lines from the south that will be brought up to connect to the site. The graphic before you shows basically the compound area, which is just a little over 1,100 square feet, the building itself. It's a small utility building. Both will be considered accessory to the principal use on the property, which is the main building used by the applicant for Burnsville Trailer Hitch. One of the items that we need to address is from the city's comprehensive plan, and we have in the comprehensive plan a Minnesota River Quadrant Plan, and then also have worked with Mendat and Dakota County on various improvements to the Highway 13 corridor. This includes both Burnsville and Savage. And for Highway 13, at some point in the future, which is close to this site, we see Chowin Avenue and Highway 13. That interchange has been planned for reconstruction at some point in time. This is something that is not on anyone's capital improvements program, so there's no funding for this particular application at this time, nor is there a timetable of when this interchange improvement might take place. However, what we want to do is to at least put the applicant and their tenant on notice that at some point in time, there may be impacts to their site associated with bringing a future trail system along Beard Avenue and this interchange improvement. So what we have done in the past for very similar types of application, like in the County Road 5, Highway 13 interchange area, is just basically put, give them notice, and identify that as part of the conditional use permit or the application that at least they know that, or they've been advised that there is some potential for this, even though it's not planned at this point in time. The recommendations are to, we're recommending approval of the application. The tower is actually 100 feet tall. It does meet all of the setback requirements and standards. It's basically going to be just the anodized metal type. They are not proposing to paint it, and from a staff perspective, actually, the city would prefer not to have these painted, even for our own facilities. We no longer paint them because they're really a high maintenance cost and issue. So we've got the 100-foot tower with the nine-foot lightning rod at the top, so overall height, 109 feet. And the recommendation is to approve the project, subject to the five conditions identified above. We want to have, as number one condition, we'd like to have copies of the cross easements and utility easements on the site, just to be on file with this particular application. Number two, that they are requesting the use of barbed wire at the very top of the fence, which will surround the enclosure. The use of barbed wire does require conditional use permit approval. Staff is recommending approval of that. It's basically going to be a one-foot section of the top, seven feet, if you will, that is going to have barbed wire to secure the site. Number three, they are proposing evergreen plantings. On the screen, there are these four evergreen trees that are shown for additional screening toward Beard Avenue. Staff just wants to indicate a couple of things. The minimum height for those should be six feet, and then also another condition is that we just want to make sure that we don't have encroachments of those within the easement areas. So there is also a storm sewer line in this location, so we just want to make sure that the trees aren't going to be placed in a location that could interfere either with easements or existing utilities. They're proposing exterior lights, just a simple light on the enclosure for, to be able to get into the entrances. Just need to note that those do need to be shielded in downcast fixtures. And the last condition of recommending approval is that the applicant is aware and that they identify that they are aware of the proposal for Chowin Avenue, at least that it's in the city's and Mendat's plans for some point in the future. With that, I know that the applicant, Mr. Schaefer, is here, and I can stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Garrus? Commissioners, questions?
Clarification, if I could.
Go ahead, Frank.
You said six-foot trees, but the recommendation here is for eight-foot evergreens.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would be eight feet for the commercial industrial.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
This is the first one that's come to us that requires barbed wire.
In the past, I've asked questions about wiring and security, and so it's simply an applicant request, not a city request.
That's correct. It's the applicant's request, yes.
Time to approve. You've got to get a CUP to allow the barbed wire.
Barbed wire, yes, does require conditional use permit approval as well.
Any other questions? Hearing, no other question? This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who would like to come up and address the Planning Commission on this application, please do so now. As you come up, please mention your name and address for the records, and welcome.
Good evening. Rob Viera, Buell Consulting, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, 1596 Merrimack Lane North, Plymouth, Minnesota, 55446.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I can just answer questions if you have any. I work on behalf of Verizon Wireless, so.
Okay. I don't think there was any questions.
Okay.
Thank you anyhow.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other person. Last chance, going once, going twice. No one coming up, I close the public hearing. Commissioners, so for discussion and your vote, your recommendation.
I can't think of anything.
Do I hear a recommendation?
I would make a, I would.
A motion?
Chair, I move that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council approval of the CUP amendment to construct a 100-foot tall monopole with a nine-foot lightning rod, and to install barbed wire fence to surround the compound at 3550 Highway 13 West, subject to the five conditions listed in our background.
Motion move by Commissioner Bradrick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benke. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes, this matter is passed on a 5-0 vote? Actually, 3-0 vote, I'm sorry. I was just thinking of everybody being here. 3-0 vote. This matter will go to the City Council at its next regular meeting, next Tuesday, that is Tuesday, June 16th, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is another public hearing, item four, application from MM Burnsville Associates LP for a planned unit development amendment for a new restaurant within the existing Carpet King Building located at 1230 County Road 42 West. And I think Mr. Slenia will present this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Yes, this is a public hearing. The site, I'm sure looks familiar to the commission. This is the Burnhill Plaza Shopping Center on County Road 42. It is on the corner of Burnhaven, County Road 42. The adjacent street to the north is 141st Street. There is an existing building here. It is currently home to Carpet King, a retail operation. The applicant is proposing a new use for that. It would be a restaurant use for the facility. Carpet King is relocating off of the property, and the applicant is pursuing another restaurant use to complement the other land uses the Plan Commission saw back in December. You'll recall redevelopment for the Champs area with the Chick-fil-A restaurant here and a freestanding Starbucks in this area. Obviously, the aerial photo is a little bit dated, as Champs is no longer on-site. Again, the applicant is proposing to stay with the general intent of the site. There is existing parking and circulation back behind the building. That would not change. We are looking at a tenant renovation and exterior improvements to the building, but not necessarily an expansion of the facility or change to the footprint. The applicant, let me just jump to, jump to this for right now. The applicant is proposing outdoor seating patio. The proposal is for 30 seats or less, which is under the threshold by which, at or under the threshold by which staff can approve that. You'll notice improvements will be made for handicap parking accessibility, as well as a trash enclosure for the facility will be added. This does eliminate some parking stalls. It also provides the applicant the ability to add some green space to the site. Let me jump back one. There is a parking deviation needed with the application. This was acknowledged by city staff months ago, as is the parking reduction for the Chick-fil-A and the Starbucks. From staff's point of view, the site is currently underutilized. There are a number of retail operations in there, but from a general parking standpoint, we are well within the capacity of the site. The Starbucks would have a, certainly a morning, morning peak rush. Chick-fil-A would be lunch, evening rush. The proposed restaurant, known as JL Beers, is a fast casual burger place. I'll let the applicant speak to some of the details on that. They do have, they are pursuing a liquor license, but it is significantly limited on seating for the site. It is not, not a large-scale freestanding restaurant. Staff believes that, again, the different peak hours for the different restaurant uses will function very well on the site. Staff had asked the applicant to add some pedestrian ways across. This is the main parking area for the shopping center. From staff's standpoint, and the applicant, Chick-fil-A will stay within their general parking field, as will Starbucks. The JL Beers facility has limited parking on the north and east sides, and therefore we are, had requested additional pedestrian access point to the larger field over there. You'll also notice additional trash enclosures are proposed for the site. Currently, on the back of the multi-tenant space right in this area, there are no enclosures. The dumpsters are visible from 141st Street. Staff sees that as a benefit to not only enclosing what the restaurant needs, but the existing tenants. That is a significant investment for the property owner. They are enclosures that are consistent with the ordinance's requirements. The applicant has done a nice job of adding landscaping to the facility, ground plantings, additional buffer for the patio. Again, the main entrance to the building is in the southeast corner. Customers accessing the patio need to enter the facility, and then will be provided access by waitstaff out to the patio. This is designed for proper exiting. Our building official has looked at that for accessible seat, or accessible access and emergency gates to get out of there should there be an issue with safety within the restaurant. Again, the seating proposed is somewhat limited. You'll notice the kitchen back room take up a substantial portion of the building. There's a large amount of bar seating, as well as table and booth seating here, and on the far east side. The patio is located here on the south side. Staff understands the nature of the business and the intent to turn around these seats relatively quickly. Thus, staff is supportive of the proposed shared parking. The applicant is looking to do some improvements to the building. If I can jump, here's a color elevation of the facility, looking to add a beige-colored Eiffel. The blade sign was discussed in your staff report. That is a deviation requested by the applicant. That is part of their corporate branding, if you will. It is, it extends, or I should say, in this zoning district, the blade sign, the projecting sign is not permitted. Staff feels this is a benefit to the project. It brings a unique character to that. It's also important to note, this is a private sidewalk. If it were a public sidewalk, if we had a property line in front of the building, that would be a separate issue, but we are dealing with a private facility. Staff is supportive of the signage, as well as the addition to, the addition of the patio, the ornamental fencing, the red awnings, again, seem to be an enhancement to the facility and a benefit to the site. On the image in front of you, you'll note the enclosures, they are consistent with the ordinance, walls, roof, and swinging doors. Again, the, based on the number of enclosures the applicant or the property owner is proposing, that is a significant investment for them. That is something we've been discussing with the property owner for a number of months as they continue to reinvest and redevelopment, redevelop the site. Again, more information on the signage. And staff is recommending approval of the application with the five conditions outlined. The applicant does have a representative here, should you have questions, and staff will stand for any questions the commission has.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, any questions for?
Mr. Slenia, reading through the report, I saw a lot of objective things that I really agreed with. You know, the use, I think, is great. You know, I think, obviously, anything we can do to bring restaurant back to that corner is a plus. I think, subjectively, there's, I'm just seeing a number of issues here. You know, clearly, it's a very tight site, and being tucked in the corner beside the existing building and beyond the aerial might be good there. You know, you're beside the existing building, the existing strip mall, and you're behind Chick-fil-A, so you're relatively confined in your parking. The traffic flow seems to run counter to what we approved previously with the Chick-fil-A and the Starbucks, and my issues of traffic from those projects are basically made worse by this, in my opinion. And then we're bringing the crosswalks to the extra parking across the two busiest chunks of the street that we've created here. Now, I realize we're supposed to leave the internal circulation to the landowner, but this site continues to put traffic onto Burnhaven Drive beyond the 141st Street semaphore. And, you know, I just think that we're really starting to cram a lot into this area, and to me, this particular layout isn't making the situation any better.
Certainly, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I can speak to that briefly. The circulation for the Chick-fil-A and the Starbucks was significantly driven by their drive-through windows. I think from a traffic, traffic operation or congestion, I think there's a benefit that the proposed restaurant doesn't have a drive-through. It is sit-down. I certainly see your point in this, for the situation with Chick-fil-A. Vehicles are exiting here while vehicles are entering the parking field back here. That is something we could certainly discuss with the applicant. We have looked at this from a traffic standpoint. We're comfortable with it, but we can certainly look, discuss that with the applicant.
Yeah, sorry, Chris.
That's all right. The reason, the other reason, or item I wanted to bring up on this, with vehicles going from east to west, essentially, there are significantly underutilized spaces back here. Customers, when accessing these retail areas, tend to focus on this general field. There may be a employee or a manager in the back, but that was, the applicant's intent was to direct additional parking to these areas back here. Again, it may be a shorter walk and less traffic than trying to get pedestrians from here to here.
I guess I can see that as a point, but I don't feel that that would be a practical solution. Most people wouldn't do that. They wouldn't perk in the back of another building. It'd be too dark. It'd be up against the dumpsters. I really think that the focus probably needs to be where, out in the main part of the parking lot. I mean, I looked at it right off the bat, and I said, well, jeez, the parking's going the wrong way. But I'm also of the opinion that that exit, that access onto Burnhaven Drive needs to be closed. And at that point, Chick-fil-A and JL Beers are both moving back to the west, and then out onto 141st, and then at the semaphore, and onto Burnhaven, and onto 42. And now we're making use of the traffic controls that were put in place with Costco in. You know, I'm also looking at the comment in the report from a building standpoint about how the, what's been getting done to the building, you know, improves the streetscape. But basically, what we have is the entry and black glass at what is now the men's bathroom. And, again, looking at the building, it would appear to me that if the building was reversed or in a different, a different layout, that you could enliven the street by having the community seating area up against Burnhaven Drive. You know, I'm basically wondering how many of these other alternatives were looked at for this building. The building appears to want a front into the northwest corner, not the south, I'm sorry, the northeast corner, which is in the center of all the parking, and not the southeast corner. You know, this is mainly just circulation and things like that. I guess I had a couple other comments regarding. I guess I had a couple of the comments regarding the building itself. I re, I really think that the EFS work that they've done here is bare minimum. It'd be nice to see a strong cornice or something on the top of the building. It'd be nice if they would also uh incorporate some recall of what they're doing here on this corner, um, at the other corner of the building, you know, just to sort of um beef up the presence of this building. Um, I'm also curious what the structure of that canopy is. You know, it appears to just be a fabric canopy hanging out there. Again, because of the work they're doing here, it'd be nice to see something that, that was a little bit, a little bit stronger, a little bit more of a statement.
You too?
I.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, for now.
Chris, I got just a couple of questions on the, on the conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the limiting deliveries um from eleven to one and four, is that, um, have I, have we done that before for other restaurants and I've missed it? Or is this a, an issue of the circulation and the traffic?
Uh, we, uh, staff has done it before, uh, not only for restaurants, but also uh uh businesses that are adjacent to residential. We are more, uh, I guess, particular on that. In this situation, it is simply to help traffic flow and congestion. Driving that condition, I would say it's typically not something we get into, but on situations like this where it is a tight site and, and uh, uh, we acknowledge circulation can be congested, that's, that's where we added the condition.
The uh blade sign was mentioned in our background, but that's not mentioned in the conditions. It's that, it's a, it's a variance. Help me with what we need to do there.
Certainly, it is, it is, uh, apologize. I thought it was listed as a deviation to, um.
But it might have been, I just, I know you mentioned that it's.
Certainly, staff is supportive of, supportive of it. Staff is supportive of the, of the blade sign. We would just acknowledge that as part of the PUD, as part of the findings.
That it's allowed.
That it's allowed.
Then that street in front of the, the rest, the proposed restaurant, that's a private street, you said?
Correct. Private sidewalk, private street, um, which really lends itself to, as to why staff is supportive of it rather than a, a property line in a public sidewalk or a right-of-way.
And it is standard on many of their other restaurants, so.
It is.
The, um, I'm sorry, one more question here, I'm sorry. So, I don't think I've ever seen before where they couldn't tell us where the rooftop units were gonna be and we don't know how they're gonna be. I mean, I, I guess we'll, we'll leave it as it's per the ordinance.
Correct.
Um, so, and if I remember right, the ordinance says they can be painted the same color as the building, or does the ordinance require them to be? Like many other places, we've required some sort of fence or, and I think we just did for WSB.
WSB.
WSB. So, can you help me with how that will be?
Certainly. Um, uh, Commissioners, based on, uh, basically the, the schedule, the design-build of the facility, they haven't determined the exact location for the HVAC units yet, which really the, the location drives in the screening options they have available to them. From a ordinance standpoint, uh, because it is an existing building, uh, buildings and additions uh can be painted, the rooftop units can be painted something similar to the, the EFS or the brick. New buildings do need to be screened differently, uh, whether that be by parapet or a, a different screening mechanism. Again, that was not discussed with the applicant. At this point, they just don't have that much information um on the location. If the planning commission is, is concerned or if that, if that is a, something you'd like to address with them, we can certainly add a condition that, that um would prohibit painting and drive the applicant to more of a, a structured screen rather than just painting the equipment.
I was just trying to clarify a couple of things. Um, and then one, one last, the, um, the trash enclosures, the, the four of them, um, I could be remembering this wrong, but I thought a certain amount of those were required when we did the conditional use permit for Chick-fil-A and Starbucks.
Correct.
So, I guess they're kind of being brought to the surface again, or where, where does the city stand with when these trash enclosures will be built and with what, what development? The, the Chick-fil-A, the Starbucks or the JL Beers? How, how is that going to?
The, um, it was discussed with the Chick-fil-A and the Starbucks that, um, the city was, uh, was going to pursue um placement of those enclosures. The applicant, the applicant's taken this opportunity to, to finally determine the location. It took quite a while to um determine the location, exactly how many enclosures they need now and how many enclosures they will need moving ahead based on their tenant configuration. It is part of this application. The property owner is responsible for those trash enclosures, whereas um Starbucks is responsible for their building, Chick-fil-A is responsible for their building, um, JL Beers will be responsible for their internal work, but here, the property owner is responsible for some of those in site improvements, including the uh trash enclosures. Uh, a permit has actually been submitted for that. Assuming we move ahead with approval, uh, the applicant or the property owner will be moving ahead with the trash enclosures this summer.
For all four of them or the three of them away from the?
Will be moving ahead with these three.
Okay.
This exists already and the two for the restaurants on forty-two will be done with the buildings.
Oh, okay, all right. That's all I have at this time.
So, it's not four of them, it's only three that are being added here?
Three are being added, sorry, the applicant put this on there, but it does exist.
Okay.
Uh, Chris, um, Jim uh brought up two of the points I was thinking about. One was the, any equipment on the roof? And I was going in the, in the direction of, to protect the city, have an order, uh, a, a, a condition that says that they will meet the city ordinance for any um equipment on the roof. And that, that very simple and, yeah, they, they probably will do it, but if we will do our job, we, you know, we hold them to that. So, I would, I move that we add a, a condition, condition six, that any equipment that is placed on the roof, um, is placed, um, meeting cities, the city ordinance. You can wordsmith it.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I can, it is included in our staff background. It is uh condition number five, that it be consistent with the ordinance requirements. Should the commission, again, if, if uh painting isn't necessarily suitable in this location because it is high traffic, high visibility, we can certainly tweak that um accordingly.
I, I, I will, I will suggest we do that. I think uh painting there would, would take away from, I mean, the presentation of the building, proposed building, looks good to me, except for the, the canopy that uh might, might be fabric and I don't know how lasting or, yeah, after six months, probably the color will go, but I'm sure the, probably the owner will take care of that. Uh, but I don't think we should have any painting on the roof there. Uh, we'd take away from the Chick-fil-A, the Starbucks. I, I think we should not do any painting on any equipment on the roof.
And Mr. Chair Commissioners, it, correct, the, the fabric, or the awning is proposed fabric, we can certainly uh bring that up with the applicant and, and discuss options.
Yeah, you go work with the applicant on that.
Chair, I have one more quick. Uh, Chris, on the, um, I know it's a condition, the sign permits that we obtained prior to installation. We, we would allow, currently the ordinance allows signage on three sides of the building?
Correct.
Not four. So, in this case, the applicant could choose the frontage towards Costco, which is a fairly visible frontage also now with that, that they should be allowed to have signage on all.
Correct.
On, on three sides, correct?
Correct.
That would then give the least visible side of the building to the west, probably the side they would choose not to.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, none. I think this application, it requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the planning commission in this matter, feel free to do so now. As you come up, uh, please uh mention your name and address for the records.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is Mike Wright, I'm at JL Beers, six-two-one-six Berry Drive, Eden Prairie, Minnesota, five-five-three-four-six. Here for questions and any feedback. Wanted to, um, talk a little bit about the parking question that came up a little bit earlier. Also wanted to point out that we only have one hundred and ten seats inside the restaurant. There are between thirty and thirty-five active parking stalls around the restaurant. The average person takes two people in a car. We think there'll only be about ten or fifteen people parking in the main parking field. Our employees will all be parking in the main parking field as well. So, we feel very comfortable with that as a parking option and wanted to make that comment.
I think, I think staff is supporting your parking plan right now, I think Commissioners do. So, any other, uh, any one of the conditions that listed there, uh, you have a concern with?
No, we're comfortable with the conditions that are on there.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Wright?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Wright, um, I guess, having been at the previous Champs restaurant, I would say that from my experience in that area, that the parking is probably the opposite of what you're looking for or what you suggested. While there are families and things that might have come multiple in a car, a lot of people came um individually, so the number of cars was actually significantly larger, I think. I have poked my head in your restaurant up in Minneapolis, too. It looked really great. Didn't have time to stop you on there, now I wish I would have.
Well, I'll bite you back next time.
Absolutely. Um, and looking forward to this one, too, believe me, the, I think the use is great. I'm just struggling with the fact that this is a, the tightest portion now of this and we've built ourselves into this corner.
No, I understand where you're coming from.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to say that.
Exactly.
We look at parking quite closely, too. We want to make sure that our guests have the ability to have access into the restaurant. We want ease, ease of access. I mean, every barrier that's in there for a guest to come into the restaurant is a hindrance. And we spend a lot of time taking a look at that. We feel that landlords have addressed that. We had the crosswalks in our letter of intent before we even signed the lease, I didn't know, uh, it was brought up by the city, but we, we wanted that in there as well. I've been to Champs, I met my wife at Champs. I went there by myself that night, um, thankfully. But, uh, the point is that, uh, I think that use of the Champs and the use of the JL Beers is somewhat different. We get a lot more groups we have, that's why we have the large community seating area. We have people coming after work. Sure, we're gonna have people come individually in cars, but, but, um, you know, we're more of a community-based, sit-down restaurant than we are a, you know, hangout place. It's, you know, Champs is a little bit more bar-driven while they have the other side. We hope to be more restaurant-driven, while we do have a large, you know, food counter area, um, and certainly people will show up. I, I don't think, only with one hundred and ten seats, too. I mean, you're picturing Champs, about two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred seats in there, right? So, this is a big difference.
Sure. Have, have, where was the driving force behind the changeover in the building? I mean, is there, is there a dollars thing on your end? Is this from the, from the landowner, uh, the land, the landlord? I, I'm just not sure. I guess, like I say, I'm seeing the change as, as a step, but only, in my opinion, a small step toward what we typically look for and, and are after from, from the architecture of the buildings.
Well, I think the landlord certainly has, you know, has input on what we do with the building.
Right.
You know, you're looking at a computer-generated picture, okay? The finished product, I think, is gonna look a lot better than what that, that shows there, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, actually, I'm in this business, so that's why I'm asking. And I, I'm seeing the flat top of the building as, as being essentially a minimum way to address what we look for these days in our, in our, in our city with some more definition in the top of the building, um, you know, a cornice. You know, if you're doing EFS already, you know, you have the ability to build that up and give it some depth and give it some, some texture that, in my opinion, is lacking from this right now. It's a, it's an existing brick building that was designed back in the eighties. You know, it has a relatively dated style to it. You know, we have an opportunity here to try to, try to update that. You know, clearly, you're, you're trying to give it your own image, but yet it, it feels like what's happening here is, is, is rather minimal, actually. Um, I like the fact that you've, you know, addressed the entry. And we're only seeing that, on this picture right here, for example, we're only seeing that corner of the building. You know, the rest of the building sort of reverts back to the old Carpet King building, essentially. And I, I guess I'm just trying to see if there's a way to get some more character, some more texture, some more of the elements of our, um, our architectural guidelines that we, we hand out, that, that we can, you know, get something a little bit more out of that building.
Sure. Well, the landlord, I don't know if Justin's here yet. Jump up here, Justin.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the connection of where's, where the, who's driving that part of this building.
Yeah, uh, this is Justin Wang with CSM Corporation, owner of Burn Hill Plaza on twelve-thirty, Conroy Forty-two.
Welcome back.
Uh, yeah, thank you. You know, it, it's kind of a combination between the two of us working together on, you know, the budget and the scope and, you know, what can we do to improve the building with keeping it within reason so it doesn't burden either one of us. You know, trying to work with city staff, this is kind of the plan that we came up with. You know, heard some of your comments, um, something we can, we can look at. You know, there's a little bit of limitations with what the building has today with some of the older brick that's there, um, and trying to add some more returns, um, you know. It's, it's hard to match the brick at times, um.
Quite honestly, if I may, Justin.
Yep.
I think matching the brick isn't the, the direction here, I think, that I'm after. Quite honestly, the fact that you've chosen a different material for this corner and built it up suggests to me that, that the recall of those materials at another corner or the other corners in addition to what's there already. And I realize you're looking at footings and things like that, too. Believe me, I understand the construction side of it, but I'm just looking at it from a finished product, that, that having that element on this corner is great for saying this is the entry. If there was a smaller version of it, some of that texture, some of that material, some of that color on the other corners or elsewhere in addition to that building, I think you're gonna start to pull that building together. Where right now, it, it, like, you know, I guess I'm repeating myself, but it, it does feel like just a minimal change to the existing retail building where you're actually trying to pull it into more of a, of a restaurant look. You know, even the, the, you know, building the EFS up along the top of the building to give you more of a cornice, um, some depth. I think it's a little hard to, to see here from the standpoint of what Mr. Mr. Wright said, where it is a relatively flat-looking drawing. I'm having a hard time trying to decipher what the relief is at where the patio is. You know, is that recessed? You know, it, it appears to be in, in some of the drawings, but it's not. I know that's the canopy right now of the existing Carpet King. It appears that's being taken off. You know, and then I guess we get to the patio itself. Is that just a, a fabric awning that is unsupported or, I, I, you have lights in there, too, and I don't see any way that the lights are being, uh, supported by what I see in this image, I guess.
Yeah, um, the, the awning is being supported by steel frame that comes out from the building underneath it, but you don't see it on this one.
Retractable or it's permanent?
Uh, I believe there's one of them in the JL Beers, maybe even in Moorhead, I think might have one of these. Uh, I'm not sure that's retractable, though, or not.
There are a couple currently within JL Beers that are retractable, there's some that are fixed. It's, it's, JL Beers is a relatively infant company. It's not like Chick-fil-A or Starbucks and the people can come in and show you exactly what a building is gonna look like. This will be the twelfth JL Beers, it'll be the first sort of remodel of a four-thousand square foot building. So, we start talking about HVAC locations and some of that. Believe me, I'm on the phone even today talking about how some of this stuff is gonna configure so we got it right. configure so we got it right. That goes as well for some of these pieces. I mean, for our purposes here, we're, we're showing you what we're going to try to get to, but, you know, there's a little bit of wiggle room in where the light might go and some of that stuff, just because the final drawings are just being completed, to be perfectly honest.
But to go back to your question, I mean, we could certainly get with our internal architect and, you know, look at the design of the building, taking your comments into perspective.
Sure.
Okay. You're still in a public hearing, so go ahead.
Okay. I, I would be in support of that. I, I, I work in, for full disclosure, I work in northeast Minneapolis, so I have frequented your other, your other location. And I do believe, given the traffic patterns, it's not like you've got parking in northeast Minneapolis. They seem to figure that out. I, I like that we've updated the building. That's the only building on the property that the property owner hasn't updated from an IFIS standpoint. It's still got the eighties curved look to it. I do know that the, the entrance is kind of modeled after many of your other properties that you've got. Same thing I, I did see on the website. The, the awning is, seems to be identical to several, so I do see some of that. I would be in support of this. I like the entrance on that side, given that that's where the traffic, you know, from an ease of entrance and exit with the, the, the traffic patterns and where they're going to park. It is a very, very visible corner for us, so if, if the parapet wall was adjusted where, then you wouldn't have to hide HVAC. I'm just trying to, from a presentation standpoint on the corner. And do you, is there any plans? I didn't see it and I apologize if I missed it. Any landscaping at all around the trash enclosure that's on the street? It's a, once again, a very exposed, right out there on the corner of Burnhaven and 1 and 141st. And was there landscaping, Chris, that I missed? Some, I guess. Okay. There'll be some evergreens around that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, those are, those are just low-line shrubs. We can certainly look at adding something more substantial right at, right at the corner. There is some green space available. I'm not sure.
I wasn't necessarily looking for a condition. I would just have you appreciate that, that it's a very visible corner and, and if that's softened in any way, I'd appreciate that. I also do appreciate the sidewalks getting to the main lot, kind of driving people to that walkway. I, I don't know if people will follow them, but I do like that we actually attempted to provide them with that. We have a couple of instances in the city, once near our, a new theater that was built several years ago, where there's a, a walkway that I think people generally follow when they're crossing the, a very busy street. So I would, I would be in support. The community room, is that new or do you, I know you don't, is that in every single restaurant? Is that?
Not in any restaurant.
Because this restaurant's actually bigger than most of your other ones.
Footprint here is different and bigger. You know, there's, there's an internal dialogue about how to expand into, I guess what you'd call, you know, buildings that don't have a basement. This will be the first JL Beers that doesn't have a basement where we store the kegs and that sort of thing. When we're able to use that for our prep kitchen, save some costs. So in order to be able to make it affordable for us to, to lease property, we needed a few more seats. The community room also will help us do things with larger group events and things like that that we hope to be able to bring in. So it's, it's somewhat experimental for JL Beers, but we think it will enhance this particular location.
Thank you, Chair.
Before you go ahead, Mr. Wright, I assume that you will have your required handicap parking. Where would those be located?
Well, I think.
I'm trying to know that they're not located out in the main parking lot.
No, I think right here, they're located right in front of the door.
Okay.
Current screen.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Benke.
For both of you, I guess. Commissioner Bradrick brought up the whole point of 141st Street and Burnhaven Avenue. Is there a reason why the entrance wasn't placed on that northeast corner? I mean, it, it's a prime corner, there's a stoplight there, it's right in the middle of all the parking. Again, I'm, I'm really feeling like there's a layout issue to this project that if we don't look at it thoroughly and answer all the questions. I mean, have you guys looked at that?
Yeah, we did address that somewhat. There, there were multiple reasons why we did it the way we did it. First off, the existing overflow parking, if you will, is easier access to this particular corner than it would be to the northeast corner and would make it easier for people to walk in there. Also, within the building, there are multiple fixed, there's a, there's a ladder to the rooftop and things like that that are affixed in the back where that would be in the main dining area. So now it's in the kitchen area.
Okay.
And we feel that, you know, I mean, it, from an access standpoint, people walking over to that spot, it's not that long of a, a walk. It's only 50 feet and really 30 feet when you think about it. It's hard sometimes looking at the size of this building when you think of sometimes a casual dining building being so large. This is a small building, so.
Sometimes it is very surprising how many people actually fit into it. I guess the biggest issue is, as Jim pointed out, is the dumpster is on the corner and it's screened and literally a prime opportunity, again, to have a focal point there is basically eaten up by a dumpster. I mean, is there another spot that that can go? I mean, literally, I mean, it's a rhetorical question because we're obviously looking at a very small parcel here, but it's just like, it, it just feels like it's in a spot that doesn't bring anything to the city of Burnsville.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could probably look at also maybe even moving it a little bit over to the further west and get it off the corner if we, if we needed to do that. At the top of my head, I don't recall what. Yeah. But also to address your, your previous question, there is a mechanical room in addition to that ship's ladder that's kind of over in that corner of the building.
It started to glance through there and it looked like, you know, you have bathrooms and things, but, you know, plumbing is pretty easy to move. But yeah, I do see that there's a mechanical back there. I don't happen to see the ship, the roof ladder, but that's okay. I do believe, yeah, the transformer's back there. You know, I, I do get all that. It just, you know, the focus just seems not the best.
Yeah, what are your thoughts about maybe if we move the, the trash enclosure to maybe the first stall or two on the other side of the drive aisle further west?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm fine with it as long as it's not in the corner, pretty much. I mean, if you needed it at the far west there of your own lot, you know, then it's convenient for your workers and not having to. I'm, I'm seeing that that main drive onto 141st is being a pretty high-traffic drive. I'm seeing the main drive in front of your patio, if that stays open, as being a very high-traffic drive. That's why when I see the crosswalks across both of those streets, I have a problem with it. I'd almost, you know, it, it, we're, it's just like I say, it feels like we're putting a lot of stuff happening there more and more as we continue to densify this, which is, I think it's a good thing. It's just as we're doing it, I'm trying to look out for the problems that I see happening there based on the experience I've had of watching this area grow.
Well, I guess the hope would be that people do follow the crosswalks. We haven't had them at the property since I've worked on it for eight years now, so hopefully that's something that people will take, too. And I think they will.
Justin, do you think if you moved it to the west end of that parking area, you'd gain back the two spots at where the dumpster is now?
That, that would be one of the things you'd have to look at is how many, if we're getting those stalls back or we're losing more stalls, what, what are the kind of repercussions of, of moving it?
Right. It does appear to be about a two-stall size structure.
Yeah.
You might gain, actually, you might actually gain a space because you already have an island on that end that you're creating island here.
Sure.
To make that turn. I don't know.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, and I, too, I sense the applicant's trying to be open to suggestions. I think it's, it'd be to everybody's benefit if, if they can take a look at it and, as well as our engineering staff and see, because certainly we want to find a place for the enclosure that's going to function for your trash haulers and everything like that, which is, I think, one of the driving factors that it's in the location it is right now. But that being said, I think if the commission's open, we can, we can add a condition to look and reevaluate that.
Chair, I, I wasn't necessarily, I was just, I wasn't looking to add a condition. I would, I guess I would ask, I understand you're spending a fair amount on the building. It's a very prominent spot. I think the backside of the mall with the building of Costco has given you some exposure and you've done a fair amount of signage for all of those tenants, which is, is nice so people can see those businesses and just respect that kind of newfound development with the, because we don't have renderings of the back of the building. We just have the rendering of the entrance and I, I would, I would, I would ask that we do something that's not quite as utilitarian on it, so it still doesn't look like the back of the building. That's why I was asking about, I hope we're going to allow you to put signage back there. Because if there's not signage back there, in some cases, it makes the building look empty as you pull up to it if there's not a sign on it. Wherever the trash location ends, I trust the people that put it in the right spot, but once again, with the thought process of how do we, how do we visually improve that, that corner without a tremendous amount of cost, I guess is all I was, was looking for. And if that's something that could be worked out between you and staff before it goes to city council, I would be happy with that.
I am with Commissioner Bradrick on this. I'm not in favor of another condition. I think it seems as if the applicant and staff are working well together and I, I would assume also that if, allow them to look at it and they can make changes that would benefit both the establishment and the city and the landlord and before it goes to the city council next week. So I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Commissioner Bradrick, on that. I'm not in favor of another condition to, to do that because the commission, the condition will not identify what to be done. You will just say, give it some thought and look at it again. So I will leave it to you guys to, to work it out and see what can be done. We'll do that. Okay? Any other person would like to come up and address the commission on this application? We are still in a public hearing. Going once, twice, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Yeah, and I think it's.
Go ahead. Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, Chair, I, I do think that we, by virtue of us being assigned the architectural commentary status of this, I do think that we need to give them specific direction. You know, we did a little bit of that last meeting. I think that as we move forward, we're going to find spots where we continue to offer direction so that what gets, you know, I think the alternative is we have to wait, we have to give them direction now and we have to table it and bring them back. So in lieu of specific direction to them that they can then bring to council and continue the process in a timely fashion, you know, that seems to be the only option here in my, in my mind.
So, so what are you really, are you recommending something be done?
Yeah, I, I do think that we should direct them to incorporate more detail in the upper third of the building. I do think that we should be recommending that they work with staff to try and find a dumpster location that is not on that corner. I do think that we should be recommending that they do not use painted equipment, that they do use a screening for the HVAC equipment that uses materials consistent with the rest of the structure.
Your latter point, I think Chris did wordsmith on that, right? On condition five?
Right. You know, and, and, you know, quite honestly, I, I do need to step back from the design end because I would like to see something stronger of, of an element for that, for that patio, but I'm not going to say I'd like to see columns and a trellis and other things. No, I, I do think that has to fall back on their, their style and their image and what they're after for that patio. I would encourage them to, you know, to look toward more significant elements, but I'm not going to try and direct that.
Okay, so. And Chair, my only comment would be, once again, I guess I was less focused on some of the stuff that Commissioner Benke said, and I'm a little more concerned about the back view of the building from a visibility standpoint. And that could simply be as much as another similar structure to the brick they put around. I don't think the brick's actually in addition to the building, it's just a facade. Maybe there's a section of brick in the back that could have signage on it that would tie the, the back part of the building together. But once again, I do agree with you that I think that we made some suggestions for India Palace and it, they worked with staff and it, it got passed the city council, so I would be in support of that.
Chair, if I might, I got one question here. Doesn't it, it seems to me that this building has round corners, but the building that's being shown here has rectangular corners. Does that mean that you're renovating those corners?
The only part that's rounded on it today is there's a kind of a parapet feature that's above the main doors.
Okay.
It's up above, it's above the roof almost, and it's, that's rounded. It's just framed in.
Oh, and the rest of it's the retaining walls out front?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's rounded planters.
Right, this, yeah, and then it's, it's, it's the planters around the building that mimic what, what happens over here. Okay.
All right. You've given a lot of thought to this, and do I hear a, a motion?
I'd like, I'd like to move.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wright.
I'd like to move.
Thank you.
That, that Planning Commissioner recommends a city council approval of PUD amendment allowing the freestanding restaurant used within the Burn Hill Plaza Shopping Center subject to the following conditions. One, two, as written, three, staff does that. Should we acknowledge the blade sign in this as well or not?
No, Commissioners, you, you don't need to staff it covered in the findings and so forth.
Okay, in the findings, in fact. Okay, number four, as written. Number five, would the addition that it be screened with materials that are consistent with the structure and not, not the painted? I would like to add number six, as enhancing, enhancing the IFIS work at the top of the building to create a more pronounced cornice or other similar architectural feature. And then number seven, to, to work with staff on attempting to move the dumpster off the corner and not get more specific than that.
So you give them a room to, to work?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm cool with that. Okay, motion move by Commissioner Benke.
Can I have a question?
Yeah.
Chris, if it's, if it's a condition and it, the decision is made that the dumpster, that's the best place for it when you get traffic involved, how does that work if we've made that a condition?
Based on the language, it could, in the end, it could technically stay there, but we would go through the exercise to, to look at those options and see if we can move it.
Okay.
Yeah, I did state it as work with staff.
Well, I'm not really excited about additional conditions, but I could, I could be in support of that.
Right.
Can I get to the second emotion?
Oh, second. I guess that's up to me, isn't it? There's only three of us.
No, I can second it, too, so. Thank you. A motion move by Commissioner Benke, seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor?
Just a bit of discussion. I, I do think that the more of this that we can do, the more detail that we can give our applicants, I think the better result we're going to get.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, what if you vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed on a three-zero vote and this, Mr. Wright, this will go to the city council at the next regular meeting, next Tuesday, June 16th, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope I haven't slowed you down much.
Item five, Commissioners, not a public hearing. Application from School District 191 for rezoning from R1, Single Family Residential and I1, Industrial Park. Two, on R1, PUD, Comprehensive Plan Amendment from Industrial Office to Low Density Residential, as well as Concept and Development Stage Approval for a Planned Unit Development for. as well as concept and development stage approval for a planned unit development for building additions and alterations to the Burnsville High School located at 600 Highway 13 East. Mr. Slenio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As you indicated, this is a public hearing. There are a number of facets to this project. First, I'm gonna start with the location. We are dealing with the Burnsville High School campus. It is 57 acres in size. It was previously seven individual parcels. The planning commission and council saw this back, back in May and platted it into one. You'll notice with this application, we are rezoning from R1 to R1 PUD. We're also correcting three parcels in the northeast corner that have been zoned I1 industrial, as well as industrial in the comprehensive plan. Staff believes this was a, a holdover from, from years ago when we were doing some rezoning. I think it, those parcels are, are smaller and got lost in translation when we were doing some previous zoning work. This is an opportunity to correct that. As indicated, would also include a comprehensive plan amendment. That area is about five and a half acres and then gets the property back to consistency with residential land use, as well as residential in the comprehensive plan. The high school and other schools are allowed by conditional use in the R1. There's quite a bit of history and information with that, so I'm gonna go through some of the high points of the site. We can get into details through questions and discussion later. What's driving this is a referendum approved by School District 191. This was back in February. And the funds for that will include the realignment of the grades within the district. So we are moving to a K through five elementary school, a six through eight middle school or junior high, and then a nine through 12 high school. Currently, the high school is only 10 through 12 with half of the senior high school at the Diamond Head Campus for part of the day. These improvements are needed as the ninth graders will be moving into the high school, as well as keeping the seniors on, on campus year-round now, rather than splitting time with Diamond Head. The combination of the ninth graders, the seniors, and the additional staff could be as many as 800 people, an addition of 800 people to this, to this building, to this campus, which is significant. The building additions, the size of the building additions, as well as the reconfiguration of the site, the traffic, the bus circulation, all those improvements are, are driving a PUD for the site. It certainly could have been done through a conditional use permit, but there were existing nonconformities that staff wanted to reconcile with this. There's a one setback issue, one height issue. Staff thought, since we're going through this issue, exercise, it was the applicant's benefit to rezone this to a PUD and keep all those uses outlined in that. Certainly, we have deviations and benefits. One of the primary benefits of the project is the improved circulation. The buses will be relocated to a different entrance and drop-off area that frees up parent pickup and drop-off. That's important as we're now adding ninth graders to the site where currently they're not, currently they're not there. The south side of the project, south side of the facility will be gymnasium, health classrooms, and elevated track. The, although the details have not been worked out, the district intends to open that up to the general public as, as a, an amenity to the community. Certainly, there's questions and concerns with security and interaction with the, with the students, and the details of that are being worked out. Let me touch on the building, excuse me, the building expansion areas. We'll start with, again, the most visible from Highway 13, and that will be this southern area here. You'll know the gym is, existing gym is in this area, football stadium's right here. This is gymnasium, health classrooms, locker rooms, et cetera. This will be significant in size and scope. The second-largest area of the addition proposed. We also have the northwest corner of the campus. This would be the northwest addition. This is accommodating the new bus drop-offs and arrivals. Currently, the, let me use this, currently buses use this drop-off on the existing situation, circulation pattern. Buses will now be routed up to here and being dropped off in this area. Whoop, wrong direction. So this parking lot will be reconfigured. This will be a new secured entrance, as well as commons area, expansion of the cafeteria, classroom and office space. You'll note in this area, the school district is proposing a outdoor patio, or plaza, I should say, elevated plaza. Again, a, a space for students to congregate before and after school as, as buses arrive. Lastly, and the smallest addition would be off the northeast corner of the site. This is science classrooms, specifically two stories in height. I should mention, there is the ability, should further expansion be needed. Classroom space in this northwest corner can be expanded. Currently is proposed at two stories, about 33 feet in height, but could accommodate a third floor of classroom and offices if need be. Commissioners will get into the building materials and architecture next. I apologize, while we're on the, the site plan, let me also mention, there will be a reconfiguration of the, essentially the storage garage in the northwest corner. This used to be the tech ed facility, was then converted for vehicles, and now is actually going back to tech ed. This will accommodate the auto body classes, welding. I can't think of what else off the top of my head. Northwest of that will be a staff parking area. As I indicated, buses will access the site through here. This is all one-way with angled bus parking and pedestrian crossways through here, and buses will then be leaving the site. As they leave the site, they will be directed north. I believe they're directed north at this point, down Portland to Cliff Avenue, to Cliff Road. That is in part a benef, a benefit in an effort to relieve some of the, the other traffic congestion. We do have grading and utility information, but for now, I'm gonna skip that and get into the building design. Again, this is the far south elevation. This is the new gymnasium space. You'll see that significantly enhanced entrance. This would, this will accommodate the, the public access to the gym when that occurs, as well as basketball, volleyball, other sporting events that access the gymnasium will be through here. This is the south elevation. This is the west elevation that you'll see essentially from Portland Avenue when you're looking across the campus. These are translucent panels across the top to really let as much natural light in as possible, as well as provide contrast from the brick. I do have building material samples that I'll pass around as I'm going through this. Jumping now to the northwest addition. Again, this would be the access point for the bus arrivals and departures. This is a main access, main entrance. As outlined in the architectural review, we are looking for a significant amount of glass, a lot of detail, the ability to categorize that as an entrance from, from the balance of the building. This raised portion right here is the raised plaza with a large amount of glass in the backdrop. Again, this looks into the commons area, further into the building, into the cafeteria space, intended to open up the facility as much as possible, let some natural light in as well. On the right-hand edge, again, this is the west elevation, what you, you'll see from Portland Avenue. This is the classroom space. This is the section that would have the ability to go to a third floor, again, in the future if that is something that the district requires. I apologize, I skipped over what you're seeing in this area, as well as here and here. That is the science classroom addition, two stories. It is not as showy as the other additions, but it is a more basic need. It will provide an additional access point here that I'll get to from that easterly parking lot. It will be the least visible of all the additions, but is consistent with, with the building Let me backtrack. I apologize to be jumping around, but I wanted to now touch on the parking. The easterly parking field is currently underutilized, except for times of sporting events. The school district is looking to increase the usability of that. As I indicated, there will be the science addition here, a new pedestrian access point for students, and a new secure entrance at this location. And this is in an effort to drive the usability of this parking area. On the west, there are no changes proposed here. There will be some site work and grade work here to accommodate the pedestrian access. You'll see on the south, the main parking lot, this is where the most, your most significant changes to the parking will be. This is, or I should say, there, the district is proposing handicap parking right up against the curb in this area with pedestrian walkways and access into the main facility. This will be for visitor short-term parking in this area with the balance of the southern field available for students. What I'd like to point out is the, again, we discussed the, the need for the drop-off and the pickup with the ninth graders being added to the facility. The district worked with our staff extensively talking about this. Parents and, and guardians will be, will be given directions on specific drop-off and pickup. They will be directed to go onto the frontage road up to this access point, at which point you begin queuing up. And essentially, there is a designated drop-off lane and then additional drive lanes that can accommodate two-way traffic outside of that drop-off. This is a fire lane all the way, all the way around. So from our standpoint, our fire department has, wants to ensure no one is leaving their vehicles, but this will be a designated drop-off pickup area, so queuing can start and run all the way up to the main entrance. Once drop-off or pickup is done, parents can leave the access, or excuse me, leave the site through here, out through the roundabout, and north or south or whatever direction they're going. That is, that is also in an effort to help consolidate and, and relieve some traffic issues. As I indicated, bus and much of the staff parking will be directed toward this northern parking lot. We mentioned with the plat back in May, the addition of the roundabout. This will be a city-constructed project. We, we will be the project managers on it. Will we be, the city will be reimbursed by the school district for that. You can see here some of the other improvements, and I apologize, this does not include the new drop-off pickup area, but it is the same circulation pattern. An additional left lane will be added onto Highway 13. A additional left lane will be added here for accessing these businesses. An additional right lane will be added in this area. And when students or visitors are coming to the site, you'll be able to come in through the roundabout, having the right-of-way and veering to the right, straight into the parking lot. If you're going north through the roundabout, you'll also have a, a drive lane to be able to continue out through here. The roundabout will be designed to handle bus circulation, as well as semi-circulation with access needed on Portland Avenue. So you can see here a little bit better as you come around the curb, if you're a student, coming to the main parking field, you'll be able to have the right-of-way, making that right-hand turn into the facility, and then have direct access to these parking stalls, keeping that traffic segregated from the drop-off and pickup using this entrance, and then segregated from the bus drop-off using that entrance. There is sufficient parking on-site. The applicant is proposing 900 stalls based on the staff demand for students and staff at the high school with, with the addition of the ninth grade. The ordinance requires 800 stalls, so there is about 100-stall surplus. Again, the district is, is anticipating future growth moving forward, so they wanted to provide a surplus of stalls. The signage, I apologize, we did, I did skip over that, the signage. There are no changes to the freestanding signage or entrance signage. The school district is proposing a 300-square-foot wall sign. This would be facing Highway 13, essentially facing the frontage road in the intersection with Portland Avenue. It is as large as our ordinance allows, that is 300 square feet. It will be individual letters, consistent with our requirements. Commissioners, I also wanted to discuss one other deviation, if I can get to it. There, as part of the improved access, again, this is the football stadium. The school district will be making some improvements to improve the plaza area right outside the stadium. And with that, they are proposing some new light fixtures. These are plaza lights. They are LED. They have the ability to change and rotate through colors over time. Certainly, in discussing this with the district, we had concerns as to how much or how often these are on, how fast they're gonna change or flash. The dis- fast they're gonna change or flash. Um, the district intends to use these solely for, uh, times where we're using the stadium, uh, where they're using the stadium. Um, they are aware of our, our timing limitations and so forth. Um, again, I think this gets to some of the pedestrian lighting and pedestrian access points that are pedestrian, uh, uh, plazas that come into play with the design tool. This is a, um, unique design. It, uh, could serve the school district very well on a, a location that does, uh, does get a lot of nighttime, um, pedestrians. Uh, commissioners, I will let Mr., Mr. Hillgardner just take a couple minutes. There are some stormwater improvements with the project. I don't know if you want me...
Yeah, that one'll work.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, just from a, a stormwater standpoint, I wanted everyone to know that much of this project is actually redevelopment of impervious area. Um, there's actually under, uh, one percent that's actually new and pervious, so according to the city's stormwater management plan, uh, those redeveloped impervious areas do not have to be accommodated with a pond. With that said, uh, they've done a, a dramatic improvement to the site with some ponding up in the northwest corner. Um, the northwest watershed is, is something like this, uh, that basically quadrants off and goes to that northwest corner. Uh, so two ponds were added. One pond is, is for rate control, uh, that will allow, again, uh, everything right now is connected into the existing storm, uh, storm sewer system directly. No rate control structures, so as fast as the water can go through those pipes, it gets into the, into the system before it ultimately reaches additional, uh, downstream areas. Um, these, these ponds, especially that furthest one to the north and the northwest will provide rate control, allow some sedimentation. Uh, there's also a secondary pond, uh, which is for, uh, water quality. Uh, this is a, a filtration pond. This isn't a wellhead protection zone, so there is no infiltration allowed in this zone. Uh, however, with the filtration, uh, that water can be, can be purified before it leaves the site, um, through a, through a network of, of drain tile systems and a, and a coarse filter aggregate. So with those improvements, uh, again, they have met the city's stormwater requirements. They've met the PCA's requirements for everything on the site, and I think it's a, a dramatic improvement overall.
Thank you. Before you leave, Mr. Hillgardner...
Yes.
Any questions for Commissioner Benkey?
Clarification here. Um, just a little talk about the filtration aspect versus the infiltration aspect. You do note that it's got a clay bottom and, and infiltration is not allowed. You know, what is the mechanism then for filtration? Is it something that is gonna be cleaned? It handles more, it operates more like a grit manhole or something?
Yes and no. Um, it's, it's not always, it, at, at the life of this project, it likely will have to have that. It's basically a coarse filter aggregate. It basically goes through this, this aggregate, gets into a, a drain tile, which, which basically passes the cleaner water through. Ultimately, over time, that, you know, there will be maintenance required with something like this. So, uh, yes and no. It, it will require maintenance. It's not something that can just become, you know, it, you can't just go in and vacuum it out or something to that, to that effect.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, back to Mr. Slenya. Any questions for him, on his presentation? Lot of work being planned for our school district?
Just a clarification.
Yes, Commissioner Benkey.
Um, the roundabout is shown and it's dashed and it's solid and it's dashed and it's definitely going in, and it's, the configuration that you show here with dedicated lanes and everything is what?
Commissioners, um, if I may, the, uh, through the, uh, plat and the development contract that the council, uh, approved in May, uh, the, the, um, uh, school district and the city have executed that, that commits the school to, or excuse me, city to designing it, constructing it, um, uh, not this year, but next year, so it is complete by, uh, the fall of 2016, and it, um, guaranteed or advanced some money to the, uh, city for design work, which is underway right now, and, uh, committed the school district to, uh, to picking up the bill. Um, I can't say, uh, a hundred percent these are the geometrics of the roundabout, but there will be a roundabout there. Uh, it will fit in that right-of-way and, uh, um, we'll have it installed by, by next fall.
Are the blue areas meant as medians?
Correct.
Okay, so it is dedicated lanes?
Correct. Dedicated lanes and I...
Segregated, sure.
Um, Brian, do you recall, is this, are there two lanes north through the...
I believe that's correct. I believe it's two lanes, and again, the, the final design is not done. I think the idea, I think the idea though is absolutely to create segregated lanes because high school students don't always follow the same traffic rules as everyone else.
I'm treating it as a concept, but having visited this location...
Maybe you have a valid, but not here.
Having visited this location for more decades than I'm gonna mention right now, this is the best solution to the traffic for this area that I've seen since, since the early seventies.
It's, it's gonna be great. I, I've, I've seen these at, at East Ridge and some of the other schools out there, and it's, it's just, boy, it, it really makes a difference in, in traffic flow and, and less accidents and things like that, so. There will be a roundabout, there will be segregated lanes. The final geometrics aren't completed.
I, I think the...
Everybody will be happy.
The segregation of the uses too, it, it just makes so much more sense now. Thank you.
Any other question for, uh, Chris?
Sure, I have one. Chris, I know, the timing of the referendum and the availability of the cash, and I know this has come to us in kind of odd chunks. Um, so this is just a concept and development stage approval. Is there anything else that'll come in front of us, or is this pretty much it?
This is it. Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, um, the way it sits right now, uh, unless there are drastic changes, which I don't believe we have time for in, in our schedule, um, even the addition of the third-floor classrooms on that northwest corner, uh, the way staff has it laid out, that would come in, uh, two staff for a building permit. That could be in five, ten, fifteen years. Um, you know, certainly by that time, there, there may be other improvements needed, but right now, this would be it.
By given the first, uh, condition, then that could be handled at the staff level, and that kind of clears that, that staff could handle that regardless of the...
Correct. It, it, uh, essentially, uh, expediates the, the process should the district need that in the future.
Good.
I would be willing to make a motion.
We still have a public hearing.
We have the designer to hear from as well.
Okay, any other question, Chris?
I did make a, just a couple notes here, Chris. Um, under tree preservation, you note that they're removing ninety trees, but sixty-eight percent are remaining, so they're not responsible for specific reforestation, but they are adding trees back, aren't they?
Yes, there is a, a, a dramatic landscape plan included in your packet. It, I just wanted to call that out, that they are under the threshold for the mandatory...
Right.
But they are, um...
They have taken upon themselves to...
Yes.
...regurgitate the, the site.
Yep. Um, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, the, the design team is here, the architect, the landscape architect, the civil engineer, as well as, uh, representatives from the school district, if, if you have questions for them.
All right. Any other question to Chris? Seeing, hearing none?
Oh, I apologize.
Well, go ahead, Commissioner Benkey. I always wanna give you a chance.
I know. I take them all. Um, you mentioned that the buses, that from this, this image right here, that the buses will be going north from the parking lot. Is that all buses or just the buses going to the northwest, northeast section of Burnsville, or...
I believe all buses, uh, Commissioners. That change, I believe, was into, implemented last, all of last year, but I, I will let the, uh, school district address that.
Sure. I was just concerned with, what that's done to the traffic at Portland and, Portland and, um, and Cliff.
Okay.
And, yes, that is...
That's it for you?
That's it for...
Motion, Bradrick? You find another?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chris, uh, Mr. Slenya, for your presentation. Of course, there's a lot of work to be done in School District 191. Now, this, uh, application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the planning commission on this application can do so right now. Is the school, who the school district rep is here? Okay, can, can you come on up? Just give your name and phone and, and address for the records and...
Mr. Chair Commissioners, um, I'm Mark Hayes with ATS and R Architects.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
And I live at...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I live at 11955 Idaho Avenue North in Champlin, Minnesota.
Welcome.
And then I also have, oh, and then Mr. Glenn Simon.
Yep, I'm Glenn Simon with, uh, Burnsville School District, and I live at 17427 Deerfield Drive in Prior Lake, Minnesota.
Welcome too. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Just, can you one, just, uh, address the question that, uh, Mr. Ben, Commissioner Benkey had?
The bus traffic.
The bus traffic.
The bus traffic.
Are they going north or...
Yeah, this year, we did ask the buses to go north to Cliff Road. Um, we, we had probably ninety-five percent of them going north. There were a few that, uh, for timing issues, we had go out to Highway thirteen so they could get to Niklet School on time.
Sure. Um, so even the buses, so the buses that go north to Portland, they get to Cliff Road, some of them have to turn west against traffic.
Most, most of the buses were taking a right, going back to Twelfth Avenue, and then going down back to thirteen.
So they were using the, the stoplights to, to...
Correct.
To the benefit there. Um, the only other question I had here, I think, is for Mark, and it's the type of translucent panels you're using. I didn't see that on the samples.
Yeah.
Is that Calwall-type?
It's a Calwall-type panel, and that only occurs at the activity center, the gymnasium.
Okay.
Right, and then otherwise, we have spandrel and the metal panels on the rest of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, you can tell Commissioner Benkey's are exported in any way.
Yes.
Any other questions for the gentleman, the architect and the school district rep?
I think it's like a continuing improvement to this building for, I mean, every, every ten or fifteen years, it seems like we do something more.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Uh, we're still in a public hearing. Anyone else who would like to come up and address the planning commission on this application? Feel free to do, to do so now. Going once, going twice, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Over to you, Commissioners.
I'm very happy to make a motion.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead then.
I would move that the planning commission recommend to see, to approve the rezoning from R1 and I1 to R1 PUD, the comp plan amendment from industrial office to low-density residential and constant development stage approval for a planned unit development. For Burnsville High School located at 600 Highway 13 East, subject to the following two conditions as written.
Motion move by Commissioner Benkey?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bradrick. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass on a three-zero vote. Um, this, this matter will go to the city council this next regular meeting, next Tuesday, June sixteenth, and, uh, good luck with your work. Uh, it's good that, uh, you have these things, these, uh, improvements planned, and the district is growing and all is well in 191, so great. Thank you for coming up and for, um, speaking to us about it. Okay. Commissioners, we move on now to item six. Another public hearing, application for, from Center Point Energy for a conditional use permit amendment, preliminary and final plat of a one-lot commercial subdivision to be known as Burnsville Regulator Station on Niklet Avenue, and a setback variance to construct a new regulator station and install a natural gas pipeline located south of 12908 Niklet Avenue and north of 12932 Niklet Avenue. Mr. Brixius, welcome.
Commissioners, I want to apologize for my tardiness. I actually expected to get here early.
You are excused. You know the traffic problem.
I also want to thank Chris for covering me on the previous application. Um, what you have before you is an application for a conditional use permit for, uh, essential services, as well as a preliminary and final plat, uh, for this property, uh, Burnsville Regulator Station on Niklet Avenue. This, uh, site currently holds a regulatory, two regulatory buildings for the gas mains in this location, and, uh, the, the property as it's shown here exists in an unplatted fashion. As a result, they need to go through a plat procedure, which will create the lot and dedicate the necessary right-of-way for Niklet Avenue. The site is a guided, uh, business retail office and is zone B3 general business. Essential services are a conditional use permit within that district. I do, uh, this shows existing conditions. You can see, uh, that there's existing buildings in this location. These buildings will be removed, along with, uh, a number of trees. The proposed building is being located here in conjunction with, with, uh, existing pipes that are being proposed. Uh, what's being requested here is that they are also asking for a setback variance. Our rear yard setback in this location is a thirty-foot setback. A twenty-two-foot setback is being requested. Uh, in, in examining the, the setback, we find that the, the setback is reasonable in relationship to the in-place utilities and the proposed extended utilities. Uh, the additional setback will put the building within twenty-two feet of the, of the, of the rear west property line. In this respect, we believe that the building will serve, uh, to shelter all the utility, uh, elements in that area and serve to screen the residential properties to the, to the west and south. Uh, in looking at the hardship, you have to find practical difficulties that are unique to the property. This property is undersized as far as a, a commercially zoned property. It, the size is fixed. The location of utilities are really mandating the location of the building, and in that respect, the city staff believes that this is a reasonable arrangement. You can see the location of the, of the proposed building right in this area. Here's the twenty-two, twenty-two-foot setback. The entire area will be fenced. There will be a driveway off Niklet, which will serve as a, a parking area for when the, the property will be, uh, serviced or maintained. A couple of concerns that were raised as far as the overall, uh, appearance is with the, this location and the removal of the trees. I want to get to this. You can see with the grading plan, a lot of the tree, tree has been removed. Is the screening that's necessary? We have residential to the south, and with, within the fence line, they are proposing a landscape plan that will provide screening to this property, as well as extensive screening along Niklet Avenue, you can see here. What has been requested by the applicant is not to provide any additional landscape screening to the, to the, uh, west. There's a significant grade separation between this and the, the property to the west. Uh, the building will house all, all, uh, infrastructure. There will be a black mesh, uh, chain-link fence that will encircle the site. In looking at this, we believe that, uh, the, the building itself will serve as a screen wall for all the activities toward Niklet, and staff is, uh, recommending that no additional landscaping be provided in that area. It should be noted that the tree preservation, it, they are removing trees beyond the sixty percent. They are saving a couple of mature trees, uh, in the front of the property. The landscaping is being replaced, but there will be a cash replacement charge of eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, uh, that must be paid as part of the tree removal. Uh, replanting within the area that's being graded and, and utilities are being extended is, is expressed by the applicant that they don't desire that as far as interfering with the overall, uh, use of the property. One of the elements that we also would like to make note as part of the landscape plan is that if we grant the variance of twenty feet and we do not require additional landscaping, that no additional activities occur back there, so that we, no storage of equipment, no storage of, of vehicles, and that area will remain green and natural right up to the back of the building. The, the building as being proposed has two light fixtures at the front of the building. This represents, this represents the appearance or the color elevation of the utility building. This is a utility building, not a commercial building. Security is more, is more critical to the applicant than... Security is more, is more critical to the applicant than customer appearance and as a result, it has this appearance. We don't believe that our construction guidelines apply. This is going to be a masonry building, secure doors, light fixtures and a standing seam metal roof. This single building will replace two existing buildings. The other two buildings will be removed and the site will have a cleaner appearance. In looking at the engineering comments, this site is disturbance will be, will be point one acres of disturbance, so no MPDS permit is required. Erosion control has been shown on the site plan and meets the city stormwater management plan. There will be a fees associated with the plat to the amount of two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six dollars for stormwater management. This gives you another elevation. This represents the final plat. As illustrated here, we're going through this process. This is an existing parcel of record, but it has not been platted. With this dedication of right-of-way, the remaining Lot One, Block One will be established and that will be consistent with our performance standards. In looking at these considerations, we have these essential services that are necessary within the city. We believe that the proposed building will be an attractive addition to it. It'll house utilities indoors. The landscaping and screening along the south and east property lines is appropriate. We're recommending approval of the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit with the variance for CenterPoint Energy to upgrade their regulatory building with the conditions outlined in the staff report. If there's any questions, I'll try to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Brixis. Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions?
A few.
Okay, Commissioner Benke has a few questions.
Alan, the tree replacement, you said it's not on-site, which is understandable, but it does seem to indicate it's in the area. What do they mean by "in the area"?
Well, actually what they're doing is they're paying a fee instead of meeting the tree replacement.
Right, but you talked about the forester finding locations and things. So, I mean, are we talking Nicolet, in the Ridgeview area?
You know, I...
Anywhere across Burnsville?
I'd have to ask Deb there's...
Okay.
There's not a prescribed, you know, particular area. We do try to, and our forester tries to look at, you know, keeping it within the general vicinity of the site so you're not replacing trees five miles away. But in this area, it's also difficult right at the site because of the existing utilities and then all the new utilities too that are being installed along Nicolet, so...
And the grade down to the Ridgeview buildings.
He is going to take a look to see if there is any place where additional, like Boulevard plantings can occur and will provide that replacement value of trees set within the general area, hopefully along Nicolet.
Right. Alan, the next thing then, you talked about the existing structures. My recollection is they were metal, so definitely the masonry structure is an improvement.
Yes.
Given the proximity to Ridgeview was, I'm sure there was notification to the neighbors, was there any communication back?
We, I haven't heard it. Have you?
No, okay.
There may be people within the audience.
Yeah, right. And then, just as an observation, I noticed the trees are already down and I think the buildings might even be gone already, so they're raring to go.
Perhaps they went before they got their approval.
They do have, I can...
Good answer.
They do, they did receive a tree removal permit. This project is being done. As you've noticed, several companies have been out along Nicolet in combination with the entire reconstruction project. So they did make application for a tree removal permit and that was approved and they've already paid the replacement fee, so we do have that in hand.
Sure. I noticed there's a significant amount of CenterPoint work in Burnsville right now.
Yes.
Is it all related or is it just piecemeal here and there?
Well, I think the majority of the utilities that they have in place were, you know, initially installed in the fifties and sixties, so it just needs, it's to that time where it needs replacement and they're looking at major pipeline changes and upgrades that we've seen down by the Minnesota River. And this is the same, we don't even have a permit on file because this station, regulator station was developed, you know, so long before the city was even incorporated, so...
So it's certainly possible we've seen some more work from them.
It may be possible, yep. This is all that we're aware of to this point.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Alan.
Sure, I have just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Alan, this might be for you or for staff. I'm just, I noticed in our background today, there was a couple of places where the, where the site's not going to be irrigated, so we require a deposit. We sit on that deposit for a couple of years. If nothing dies, we give it back. Is that how it works?
Yes. Exactly. Two growing seasons.
If it does die, then we replace it, they replace it and then it comes out of the deposit? How does that work?
Usually the applicant replaces it because they want to get their security back.
Get the deposit back.
Yep. If not, we do have the money and we do have the authority.
If nothing else is done, okay, because of the... And there may be somebody here, some neighbors, but I guess, I know in the past, given the proximity to residential, was there any thought given to limiting the operation of the construction? So if you're a neighbor there, is that covered under something else where they won't be setting block at...
Operating beyond...
Middle of the night and...
There's not been any requests to expand beyond the standard hours, so...
Operating hours, okay. So then that would mean they can't?
Probably have to.
Okay.
Public hearing.
And then, yeah, during the public hearing, I might be just curious to know the, kind of the timeline of the reconstruction so the neighbors kind of know what's going to happen.
So any other questions, Mr. Brixis? Thank you very much, sir.
Again, I want to sincerely apologize. I didn't realize it took two hours to get from anywhere.
There's a bridge closed, Alan.
Yeah, well, we, you know, we didn't see you and we thought it was the traffic and with the closure of the Cedar Avenue Bridge, so... Okay, this application from CenterPoint Energy requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the planning commission on this matter, is free to do so. As you come up, please mention your name and address for the records.
I'm Stacy Verjean. I live at 12932 Nicolet Avenue in Burnsville.
Welcome, Stacy. Nice to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here because there was no notification to residents by CenterPoint Energy with their plans to remove every single tree on that lot. My balcony is about seven feet from that fence line. I overlook that property. It's basically like looking out at my backyard. I'm on the top floor of Ridgeview, which is the third floor and it used to look out. I used to feel like I was in the treetops. There were very tall, old, beautiful trees covering that lot. I came home from work to find they were all gone or in the process of being cut down, which was a shock. So the existing conditions are pretty bad. All the trees are gone. There's no time for appeal regarding that because we were not notified. It was one building that needed to be notified. It was not done. The right thing to do would have been to let us know. Currently, their existing conditions are two old tin building sheds, utility sheds. They are still there. They have not yet been replaced. It's good to know they will be covering some of the existing piping that's above ground and replacing that fence. I am concerned about the landscaping that's, you know, being planned. I understand there is some along the fence lines, but for those of us who live on the upper floors of the building, well, we'll be looking down at a roof. I do understand it's a utility building. You know, it has a function. There's a purpose. It's not meant to be pretty, but like I said, it is very close to our, the residence of that one building at Ridgeview. It would be nice if it blended in a little bit. It is a residential area. I know there are also businesses there, but it should blend in a little bit more. If something can be done to add additional landscaping, to soften the lines where they would not be in the way, would be nice. I'm concerned, are there going to be any cables or wiring above ground going to that building? Is it all underground? Just as far as aesthetics goes, you know, what is this going to look like when all is said and done? I don't want to look out an ugly lot. And it does pain me that all those beautiful trees are gone, so that's all I have to say.
Just a moment, Stacy. Can I ask someone to respond regarding why no notification was given to the residents there?
I can respond to that. There is not a notification requirement for the removal of trees. If somebody applies for a tree permit, it's reviewed and there is not a requirement. That's not to say that, you know, the applicant can't, you know, talk to people about what's going on, but it's not required and the city does not do that.
Any other response to regarding the other points that you raised?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Just a few points of the fence line. We have the trees. The trees, the trees will not be the tall trees that have been replaced, but they'll be starting off. We have six-foot pines and a variety of others. The area within the fence area is going to be sodded. You can see that the sod requirements along here, so it will be green. The only area bituminous will be outside the fence, which is designated here. The fence line follows this. The building will have this appearance, which will have a metal standing seam roof and a earth tone color. Those are, those are the elements that we've tried to incorporate. The trees, the vegetation will, as we indicated, it's not an irrigated site, but it will be insured for two years to ensure survivability. It will mature over time. I don't think we'll ever recapture just what she has lost as far as sightline, but those are the elements that have been included in the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Brixis. Thank you. Mr. Yen, you heard...
Can I ask him to lay back a couple of points?
Please, sir.
Can you go back to the site plan for a second?
The site plan or landscape?
The landscape plan that you just had up, I'm sorry. Am I right in seeing that all of the current piping is now below ground or in the building? Is that correct? So that the site is going to lose all of the piping that's there now?
I believe everything's going to be encased. Chris, do you have any?
Yeah, there's one area in the, it'd be the northwest corner. Right up there.
And that gets...
There is, there's something that sits above ground.
Right, but basically the several current above-ground devices are now either consolidated, buried inside the building. It's just the one that's as far away from that Ridgeview building as it can be, I guess. And then if you can go to the building elevation, the image again. This is the side that faces Nicolet?
Nicolet, yes.
So somebody in Ridgeview to the south would not see that rather industrial-looking door. It would be the south. Oh, the south elevation does have a door also.
South elevation, north. So I guess the east elevation is what's facing Nicolet?
Yeah, the east elevation faces Nicolet, huh?
Yes.
Actually, yeah, why don't we see if somebody from CenterPoint can address that, I think?
Please mention your name and address for the records.
Casey Tolleson with CenterPoint Energy and I'm at fourteen eight zero one Oakboro Drive, Savage, five five three seven eight.
Welcome.
Andrew Algobin with CenterPoint Energy. I am at one five eight seven nine Highland Point Court, Upper Valley.
Welcome.
We just have two doors planned. One, the main reason is for just cross ventilation should we have to vent the building. They both have louvers in them to provide ventilation should we have a leak or something, so that's the main reason for two doors. And then they're just placed at opposite ends of the building, on the south and north side.
So it is, it is definitely the south and the north, so it does face the building, so they, there's no option to switch it to east and west?
There's an option for that, yeah, sure. Yep.
And I guess the question for the resident, for the neighbor, would be if that helps a little bit, I guess. Thank, I realize. Thank you. Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the...
Actually, not.
Bradrick?
We'd like to take the opportunity to apologize to the residents. The reason why we took them down so quickly was part of the fish and wildlife requirements as we take down these trees early enough so that birds don't get in and nest and have the fledglings up there, which means we'll have to wait till way after August to take down these trees and then start the construction.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
One other thing I want to clarify, that fake window you saw, that's a picture of an example of a building we did recently. We are not planning to put that on there.
I don't see one here.
Yeah, the background said that was going to be eliminated.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I would imagine you're subject to a lot of rules in terms of getting this approved and built.
Yeah, I mean, that building, that window was put there for a specific location for other permitting reasons.
Sure, I guess I meant the trees and having to take them down at a certain time and a number of other rules that apply to the utilities.
If you go back to two years ago when we had that storm up in northeast Minneapolis, we had a lot of emergencies to attend to when the trees uprooted some of the pipelines in the area. So we're trying to avoid a repeat of some of these things, you know. As we move along, we continuously improving based on what we've learned in the past.
Very good.
Thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it. Okay, we're still in a public hearing. Anyone else would like to come up? Welcome, sir. Please give your name and address for the records.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Jay Hunt. I live at forty-three fifteen Upper, one hundred and forty-fifth Street West in Rosemont. I own a property at one twenty-nine thirty-two Nicolet. As far as the aesthetics, thirty-six years ago when I bought that place, I probably had one of the nicest views of the entire Twin Cities area and as the trees grew, that was lost. And it was nice to see trees, but not nearly as nice as the view of the Twin Cities that you could have from my balcony. So I'm happy to hear that you've given some consideration to the height of the trees. My concern, however, is, and I'm sincere when I say it's nice you're considering birds when you cut down the trees, but I'm concerned about the safety of the people that are living there. I think there's probably eighteen units facing that station. I'm not sure, but I know my unit is right next to this young lady's and if she said seven feet away, I doubt that any of you would like a gas pipeline seven feet away from your back door. And I'm wondering if any consideration was given to relocating that gas station at this time? I also have a question about, or several questions about if they were to build a brand-new, and I have to confess to some ignorance about the language and the technical aspects of this, but if you were to build a brand-new regulator station today, could you build it that close to a residential place such as Ridgeview? Or conversely, if I were a developer, could I develop a property that close to a regulator station? And I'm wondering, and I'm a bit ignorant about how our government functions and a bit dismayed that two or three people are here in front of the commission.
Ask your questions, sir. We are making notes and we'll have staff.
Right, so my question is who has investigated gas pipeline regulator, regulator station accidents and explosions? I mean, has that been done? And they, CenterPoint apparently is asking for a variance or a waiver and I wonder what is the purpose of the rule or... of the rule or regulation that they are asking for you to waive?
So I have the- the gas pipeline and the regulator station so near to Ridgeview. Those are two questions. Any others?
Well, who- who, I mean, have you as a planning commissioner investigated gas-
Investigated-
Regulator station accidents?
Okay.
I mean, my understanding has been quite a few of those over the years.
Okay. All right. Any more?
Also, what kind of security provisions? I don't want to go too deep into that, but this is a new day and a new age, and people talk about soft targets. And what kind of security is being considered or put into place to protect residents from that?
That's it?
That's-
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. No, that's why you're here?
That's why I'm-
You're here to address the commission, and staff will try to respond. Who will? Okay, Ms. Garrison?
Um, a couple of things. Actually, this regulator station has been there since the late 50s, so it was there before all the residential buildings went in. It's been existing there. I don't know of any problems. We would leave that up to CenterPoint as to, you know, what issues there may be with the- with regulator stations. We do have them in several locations throughout the city. Many of them are in residential neighborhoods very similar to this. They have to be in a location close to the people and the businesses and, you know, whoever- who uses them. So they have been in place. It is the same. It would be the same process. It's a conditional use permit, meaning these types of facilities are- they're allowed in the zoning, but we do take a look at them for impacts to adjacent properties, and that's why there are screening requirements and those types of things that have been discussed in some of the conditions.
Well, and that's what I'm aware of, is that it was there before, I believe, before the apartment builders were built. But if they were to build it today, would that be allowed? Because lots of laws have changed-
No, it would be allowed.
Since 1950.
It would be allowed. It's- the essential services are a conditional use permit in the zoning district, in the business zoning district, yes. So they could put it- they could install it completely new today.
That close?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's the regulator station. Oh, Mr. Brickses?
We have a number. Essential services include not only the gas mains, but also electrical services, and basically, these are, just by definition, essential to the overall operation within the cities for your apartments, the apartment doors, whoever has natural gas for heating or electrical components. We have substations and other things like that that are also included under that broad definition that are defined, and their siting and placement is basically, as Dev indicated, based on user need and where we provide those services. So they are not uncommon within these locations, and there is no separation that is specific to that issue.
Okay, good. Why don't you- why don't you come on up with it? So we can get you on TV.
This is Casey again, representing CenterPoint Energy. One thing I'd like to address, you asked about relocating the station. We have an existing easement that runs through, I mean, close to that neighborhood and actually behind our regulator station for a larger pipeline that we purchased from our supplier years ago, so that we feed the neighborhood from that large pipeline. So it's not just as easy as picking up that station and putting it somewhere else. That station feeds Nicollet Avenue and a large area to the west as far as, and a neighborhood west of 35W. So to take that out would take out, you know, hundreds and hundreds of homes. So it's not, we can't just pick it up and move it. That's clear to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Casey, as far as a couple of other comments, I mean, clearly, a masonry building to contain a lot of the controls and things is going to be a more durable and easier secured, and a building that's going to protect the neighborhood better than the metal buildings that are there.
Yeah, I would agree.
And it appears that the pipe itself, anything above ground, has been moved from what currently is to the south of the site to the far northwest corner.
Well, there are- there's one in the northwest corner, and then if you can go to showing the plan on the screen. Yeah, can I just use your mouse here?
Yes.
So this area is an above-ground valve loop. This is a smaller regulator loop, similar to what's housed inside this building. The building has some larger equipment. The valve loop has to be accessible above ground. That's our internal standard, that we have them above ground for maintenance.
Sure.
We always have, I mean, workers are checking these things out pretty frequently, so to have them above ground for maintenance, repairing them, is kind of essential to us.
Right.
So that's why we have a few other above-ground facilities.
So have we reduced the amount of above-ground pieces of this area, then?
Yes. I mean, not only with the above-ground pipe, but with the consolidation of two buildings into one, I believe we have.
Okay. And as far as the issue of the variance, I think this, I think staff went through that pretty thoroughly about the size of the lot, and clearly, there's a method to the organization of the pipe that is suggesting the building needs to be in this location.
Yeah, we try to have from certain facilities, for example, from the building to this regulator here. We want to have a X amount of feet between them with a valve for emergencies, so we can shut it off if we have to repair something.
Right.
That small site contains it significantly, so we tried to get as much as we can out of it and then exceed that variance. I think it was by eight feet, to keep it reasonable.
And to restate what you said, basically, those elements that are above ground are actually a safety feature.
Yeah, I mean, right.
There are valves, the valves that allow you to control it if there's an issue.
Yep.
And you can get to it if there is an emergency.
Yeah, much quicker than having a buried valve-
Sure.
-with snow and ice on top of it. That would take a while to get out.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Okay. You've heard from staff explanations. You may not feel secured, but I think they have given reasonable explanation why certain things are done. So I hope you, you know, feel better coming and speaking to the planning commission about your concerns. And we thank you so much for coming. Also, Stacy, right? Yes, thank you too for coming and for letting us know of your concern. Okay? Okay, we're still in a public hearing. Anyone else who would like to come up and address the commission on this matter? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, over to you. Any other questions, comments, or we need for a motion?
I would- I would make a motion, Chair.
Welcome, sir.
Okay. I move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the preliminary and final CUP amendment and variance to allow CenterPoint Energy to upgrade their natural gas regulator station and construct a new building, subject to the five conditions listed in our background.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, did you know when I added number six, that the doorways be relocated at east first elevations?
I guess we can. I think they said they were- they were open to that, so.
Okay, six conditions.
Six.
Okay. Well, here is a second from-
I would second that.
Commissioner Banky. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Passed with a three-zero vote. And this matter will go to the city council's regular meeting next Tuesday. That's Tuesday, June 16. You have an opportunity to go there again and let the city councilors know of your concern. We make a recommendation to them, and they make the decisions. So that's our job here. Thank you, guys, for coming and for expressing your concern and for representing CenterPoint Energy. Okay, next item on the agenda is updates. Any updates, commissioners?
None from me, Chair.
Staff?
The only update from staff is your next meeting will be June 22. That will include some training for our newly-appointed commissioners and, as well as getting into some specific details for the planning commission. We're asking all commissioners to attend, if they're available. It will be, I think, productive and a good discussion for- for the commission to have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I am scheduled to attend the class Thursday.
You're attending the class?
Day after tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, yes, yes.
So.
Is it Thursday or Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. I would like to thank City Mayor Elizabeth Couse and the city council for reappointing me to the planning commission. I find this work very, very useful and giving back to our community. We work hard to make Burnsville the best place to live, to shop, to own your business, and to work. And I think the planning commission plays an active role in making this happen. So city council members and Mayor Couse, thank you for reappointing me. I enjoy my work, and I pledge to continue to do my best with other commissioners and with staff. Okay. Adjournment?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Banky, second by Commissioner Bradrick, Allen Fair.
Aye.
Aye.
On a three-zero vote, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.